The, the, the general, uh, report on, on COVID-19.
Mayor?
Special emphasis today on the Hispanic, uh, community. Also have ambition to our staff, I think, that, uh, central health and community care here are also here to speak to us.
Mayor, this is Leslie.
Yes, Leslie. Oh, welcome.
I just wanted to make, yeah, well, yeah, I've been on, it's just that you haven't been able to see me, so I think we've got it. Thanks.
Cool, I can see you now, I hear you. All right, uh, anybody want to say anything before we get started? Manager, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and community members. Uh, as you know, we're going through an unprecedented time for our community, and we have seen incredible partnerships as we all tackle this pandemic together. Uh, today, we're going to be giving an overview from our health department and our great partner in central health and community care. Uh, so I'm not going to delay any longer and kick this over to, uh, Director, uh, Stephanie Hayden, uh, to tee this discussion up. Director Hayden?
Good morning, um, thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. Um, we're just, I'm just gonna give just some high-level overview since we have, um, a really tight agenda today. Um, our staff have continuing, are continuing to provide, um, assistance at the department operation center. Our epidemiology and surveillance, um, folks are, are working on our case investigations as well as our contact tracing. Um, we have thirty-two staff that are assigned, um, to work on case investigation and contact tracing. We will be onboarding an additional twelve, um, this week. We are also, um, having conversations, we had a meeting with our, um, human resources director, um, to talk about, um, the potential of other currently-employed City of Austin staff that can transition over and to assist us with contact tracing as well. Um, we've had a meeting with, um, central health and community care, and community care is going to, um, based upon the, um, they, as they increase their number of testing opportunities that they're going to be providing the public, they are going to, um, start to do additional, uh, case investigation and contact tracing to cover, um, all of their clients that they are working with. So they will be partnering with community care as well as, um, a couple of, um, nonprofit community partners to be able to assist them. And so we'll, we'll, we'll kind of split that process up between case investigations and then the community partners will be able to do the additional contact tracing. Um, the, the other thing that I want to highlight is, is through the incident command, um, operations, the nursing home, um, area has been set up and, and they are, um, I will be coming forward with a memo on the twenty-first. Memo will provide you a response to the resolution, uh, the nursing home resolution. And so within the response, we've developed a plan to, um, ensure that test all of the staff as well as the, uh, residents of the thirty-two nursing homes and the seventy-five assisted living facilities. Um, at this time, um, as, as you all, um, will see and Dr. Esq. will show you, um, in his slides, um, we had a list of A through M, and with the A through M, um, we have completed eleven of those, um, sites, as well as we have one additional one that will be, um, addressed on tomorrow, May the twentieth. And so we will complete that initial A through M. Now, one of those was a state facility, and so we've not included that in our, in our account, and we are coordinating with the state on that. Um, staff will be, um, through the ma, through the governor's order to ensure that thirty-two nursing homes are, are being addressed within the fourteen-day period. Our staff are collaborating, um, across the city, um, in order to, um, complete the rest of those. So exactly, we are, um, totally, we have completed thirteen sites. And so as far as the estimate, um, for the cost of the testing kits, um, the PPE, the, um, nursing home fund, the study, we're looking at a total of two-point-nine million dollars to be able to cover all of those expenses. Our, um, our social services branch is continuing to work and, um, ensure that, um, our partners, um, are collabora, collaborating across the city. Um, so whether it is our childcare, um, um, task force that is, has been ensuring that essential workers, um, have, um, childcare opportunities. Um, also, they are working with the childcare providers to, um, develop a plan so they are able to increase their capacity. So based upon, um, what's in the governor's orders as well as what's in the city's orders, um, our staff are going to be, um, working with, um, all the childcare, childcare providers as well as, um, day youth camps, um, in order to assist them as they, um, begin to look at their operations and open up. Our homelessness folks are, um, continuing to ensure our homeless population's, um, needs are met. Uh, we currently have, uh, four, um, protective lodges that are up in, um, and, and, um, running. Our convention center is, um, continuing to partner up to ensure we have food access. We, um, executed a contract, uh, that was effective on Friday for AISD, and, um, and so that will, um, that started feeding for the parents, um, on yesterday. As our, as our staff continue to, um, work and determine, um, there's, there's definitely, um, some unmet needs that we have determined that we have. We are, um, developing a comprehensive outreach strategy for specific zip codes where those zip codes where we see, um, disparities. And so, um, in addition to that, we are also, um, developing a, um, we have a current hotline, a nursing hotline, but we will, are going to add, uh, the ability for, um, folks to call in if they have any questions about their inability, um, to, to work because they, um, they really need assistance either with sick leave applications, um, um, or applying for that process, but any type of basic needs or financial needs that they may need, um, and any questions that our staff will be able to offer. We continue to provide our, um, communal disease unit and, um, our, um, STI and, um, HIV, um, clinics are still open and providing those services in our community. And that concludes my, my, um, update.
All right, colleagues, we're going to continue to go through all the presentations so we can make sure that we hear from everybody, uh, and then we'll, we'll do questions. Uh, we'll give everybody the chance to ask two or three questions, go to the next person, two or three questions fast, and we'll just keep moving around until we lose people, but that's to ensure that everybody gets a chance to, to be able to ask questions. Okay? Who's the next presenter?
Dr. Esq. is, and so, again, Mayor Council, thank you, Director Hayden, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Esq.
Thank you, Spencer. If I could get AV to pull up my slides, uh, we're waiting on that. Let me, uh, recognize, uh,
Sir.
Austin Travis County EMS and our EMS colleagues in Travis County this week is EMS week. Uh, I tell you that the, the city and the county have benefited greatly from this close relationship between public health and EMS. Uh, the EMS system has been involved in, in testing, uh, in addition to the regular treatment of, of patients in the community. Uh, you know, the, the, the testing, the, um, you know, command and control, the public information piece, they've been integrated at every level, and we are certainly grateful for that relationship here in Austin Travis County. Can y'all see my slides?
Could you, uh, please switch which presentation?
It's the one with my name on it. Uh, the COVID-19 update.
Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to say, um, our city clerk also emailed this to all the council members, and it's B1, the name of the file is B1 COVID-19 Council Presentation, in case anybody wants to pull that up. From their email, and that email came through at eight-twenty-one.
There it is. Okay, great. If you could switch to the, the next slide, that'd be perfect. Okay, uh, so this is a, an update of our graph from last week. Again, the, the red bars are showing cumulative cases. The yellow bars at the bottom are new cases by day, and the green is the percent change as compared to the previous day. Um, the percent change, as you can see, continues to drift downward. Uh, right now, that equates to a doubling time of about twenty-six days, uh, so still heading in a positive direction. We did have a, a slight uptick yesterday with new, seventy-eight new cases, uh, so we will continue to follow that trend. Okay, I can share it from my side if, if that works, or do you think you can work it out? Do we want, um, Dr. Esq. just to share it on his side?
Is staff with us? Dr. Esq., why don't you share your, share your slides? Can you do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're good to go now.
Okay, can you switch forwards two slides? There we go. Okay. So what you're seeing now is, uh, new confirmed cases by day, those are the blue bars. The yellow is a rolling seven-day average, uh, so you can see that we've, you know, been this, in this oscillating phase between forty and about fifty-five cases per day on average on that seven-day rolling average. Uh, so we are relatively flat, uh, when it comes to new cases per day. Next slide, please. What you're seeing here is a refresh of, uh, the slide I showed you last week, which is the, uh, the hospitalizations in the five-county MSA. The orange line at the bottom is discharges, the blue line is new admissions, and the gray is the total hospitalized. The yellow is showing you the seven-day moving average of, of hospitalizations. As you can see, that has been trending upwards. However, uh, yeah, this is, this is more due to, uh, patients being in the hospital for a longer period of time rather than a, a sudden spike in new admissions. So the next slide I'll show you, uh, the, uh, the breakdown of the new admissions and a rolling average just regarding the new admissions. Next slide, please. So this is the new admissions in the five-county MSA, uh, based upon data from our three hospital systems, Baylor Scott &amp; White, Ascension Seaton, and St. David's. Uh, and again, you can see that our, uh, seven-day moving average has been between eight and, and ten per day for quite some time. So again, relatively flat when it comes to new admissions, but that cumulative effect happens over time because of, of the duration of stay of individuals related to COVID-19. Again, these are factors that, that play into our, uh, our, our progress towards surge and one that we're going to be paying close attention to. Uh, you know, I think this shows us that we have, uh, effectively plateaued or flattened the curve in Austin and Travis County as well as the rest of the five-county MSA, but we're going to need behaviors to continue, we're going to need those protective measures to continue in order to keep this as flat as possible. Um, having said that, if we have increases over time, even if we don't see a surge similar to, uh, what was experienced in New York, we may, uh, continue to have hospitalizations rise over a longer period of time, which may still stress the system. Again, we'll continue to monitor this along with our, uh, hospital partners and report back on this regularly. Next slide, please. What you're seeing here is an update of our, uh, demographics related to hospitalizations in the five-county MSA. Um, uh, the green line at the top is, uh, is our Hispanic population. Uh, the yellow is, is white, non-Hispanic. The orange is African-American, the, uh, gray, which, uh, is significantly lower this, uh, this time, is other or unclassified, uh, and that's due to good work by our epidemiology staff to resolve those, uh, those unknowns. And the, uh, the blue is Asian-Americans. Uh, so again, we can see that this week, our Hispanic population, our African-American population are overrepresented when it comes to hospitalizations. And again, this, uh, is, uh, of substantial concern to us because of the, uh, this disproportionate representation. Uh, you know, we are continuing to work, as, uh, Director Hayden said earlier, on reaching out to these communities, and we're grateful for our partnership with Community Care, uh, hold talk after I do in relation to some of the efforts they're doing to reach out to this community. Next slide, please. When we look at the weekly confirmed cases, uh, for Travis County, and we can see that last week we had a drop, uh, to three-thirty from three-eighty-one. However, again, over the past seven weeks, relatively flat when it comes to new cases. Um, you know, this, this provides us a snapshot with how we're doing, but as we go into the next slides, uh, we're going to see that there is substantial variation across the state, which to me indicates that we need to have, uh, local control, uh, local influence over policies, because this epidemic, this pandemic of COVID-19 is affecting different cities, uh, differently at different times, uh, which to me, uh, suggests that, that a statewide approach, while it's, it's helpful to have a statewide strategy, we do need local control to help influence the curves in our own jurisdictions. Next slide, please. So what I've break, uh, broken down here is, uh, new cases by day per million. All right, so the, did the per million to give it sort of, uh, uh, a, a common measure across the jurisdictions, given the substantial variation in size of our major metropolitan counties. Uh, so what you're seeing here is Travis County, again, relatively flat, a little bit of oscillation, uh, between, uh, you know, thirty and, and forty cases per million, uh, per day. Next slide, please. Bear County similarly has been flat. Uh, when we look at, at some of Bear County's, uh, hospitalization numbers, uh, they had a peak hospitalization that happened, uh, around the mid of, of April, which indicates that they may have had some unknown cases earlier to the left of this slide before we had adequate testing in place. Next slide. Dallas County is much different. Uh, you can see a substantial peak happening at the end of April. Uh, they've managed to, to plateau that off now, but a substantially different picture than, than what we're experiencing here in Travis County and Bear County. Next slide. El Paso similarly experiencing an increase, uh, particularly over the past two weeks. Next slide. Harris County, uh, has been, you know, they had a peak, uh, around the, the middle of April, uh, they flattened that out, and it's trending upward again. Next slide. Tarrant County, similar to Dallas County, is experiencing a, uh, substantial increase, uh, in the past two weeks. Next slide. And Texas as a whole, uh, again, has been relatively flat since the middle of April, uh, with a trend upward. Again, uh, you know, there's substantial variation based upon the metropolitan county across Texas. We also know that Amarillo is, uh, is seeing a significant increase. And again, this is evidence that, that, uh, that we need some local control when it comes to managing our own jurisdictions. Uh, this is the reason why we, uh, stepped out the staging last week, so that we can communicate with the public how we think we are doing right now at this moment, and hopefully affect behavior in the community so they understand the risks for them may be different from the risks in Amarillo or Dallas or Tarrant County or Harris County. Next slide, please. This is an update of our nursing home clusters. Uh, again, this includes nursing homes, long-term care facilities, and, uh, other institutions. Uh, the, the ones in gray have not experienced a, a change in at least three weeks, uh, so those are inactive clusters at this stage. Uh, so we're happy that, uh, we have five of those, uh, uh, this week. We hope that we have additional ones in the future as they, uh, effectively have, uh, limited further transmission within those facilities. Uh, we see that, uh, despite that, we've got two new outbreaks at the bottom, P and Q, and, uh, uh, a total of eighty-three new cases for these clusters this week, uh, four-hundred-and-seventy-three total cases between staff and, uh, and, uh, residents, with a total of forty-six deaths. Uh, again, our, our, uh, nursing home strike teams and our nursing home task force continue to work hard on this issue, providing support. Uh, we're grateful for, for the state's, uh, involvement now in, uh, supporting nursing facilities, including testing, as well as providing, uh, the strike teams for other facilities, uh, around the state to, to really try to get a handle on this. Again, we continue to have dialogue with these, uh, with these facilities, with their administrators, with their medical directors, and, uh, uh, continue to, to share best practices between the facilities so that we can gain better control over this and, and hopefully prevent the introduction completely, uh, into these facilities that, uh, that don't have, uh, COVID-19 cases at all. Next slide. Uh, this is a new slide related to non-institutional clusters. Uh, so you can see this is broken down by different sectors. We've got construction, manufacturing, retail trade, uh, financial insurance and real estate, and services. Uh, again, you can see that, uh, the construction is the majority of the, uh, clusters that we're seeing that are not involving institutions, with nine, uh, general contact, general contractor-related, uh, cluster investigations, two related to concrete, three related to electrical heating and air conditioning, uh, one related to excavation, two related to plumbing, and two related to special trades. Um, we, uh, we are, we are continuing to, to provide outreach to this community. Uh, we have piloted some, uh, targeted testing of construction sites, and we'll continue to, uh, to reach out to this community. We're really trying to, to, uh, engage construction in a partnership so that, uh, uh, they can take advantage of, of resources which are available, they can come out and do, uh, site testing if they desire, and, uh, and continue to build those partnerships. We have identified that there are some challenges associated with, with testing at construction sites. Uh, there's some ongoing concern about, uh, being detected, there's some ongoing concern about, uh, the inability to work. Uh, you know, quite frankly, uh, there's a disincentive right now for people to, to get tested, because if they test positive, then they're out of work, and in some circumstances, they don't have assurances of, of a paycheck. And that's not only for construction, that goes with, with all of our workforce. And this is a substantial barrier, and this, uh, this barrier is going to create challenges for us as we try to control the, the outbreak of, of COVID-19 in Austin Travis County as we open things up. Uh, these kind of disincentives, uh, are going to make it difficult for us to control, uh, and, uh, and that's something that, uh, that I know Councilmember Casar is, 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 uh, involved with and going to be talking about later, but, uh, this is something we should all be concerned about. Uh, again, we've been talking about this for weeks and weeks now, the importance of removing these disincentives for people getting tested, people getting diagnosed, people getting treated. And we really do have to work hard on, on breaking down these barriers and these disincentives if we're going to be able to maintain control and keep businesses open. Next slide, please. So this is the, uh, targeted testing that we did at two different construction sites last week. Uh, there was a total of a hundred, around a hundred and twenty-seven individuals, uh, who were tested. Uh, you can see both sites had a, uh, negative rate of about ninety-two-point-one to ninety-two-point-two percent with seven-point-eight and seven-point-nine percent positive. Uh, so again, you may say, well, that's a really low number, seven-point-eight, seven-point-nine percent. Uh, our, our regular drive-through testing right now, uh, has a positive rate that's in the neighborhood of two-point-three percent. So this is more than triple, uh, the, the, the rest of the community's rate of, of positivity. Uh, so this is concerning. This does indicate that we need further testing in this community, uh, and, again, Community Care is going to talk directly after me about some of the work they're doing to target, uh, construction workers as well as, as our minority populations. Next slide, please. So, uh, three weeks ago now, we, uh, rolled out this public enrollment for testing. So we transitioned from a requirement of a physician referral to, uh, to testing to this public enrollment piece, and as a result, we've, we've tested substantially more people than we have in the past. Uh, so this, uh, two-thousand-seven-hundred is twice the total that we did for the entire outbreak before that through, through our drive-through sites, so we're, we're very happy with this. Um, you can see, and I apologize, the, the colors are different, uh, on the two slides as it relates to, uh, to different ethnicities. Uh, you can see that, uh, in the, in the light purple, uh, on the left side is, uh, the, the majority of our individuals being tested have been white, uh, with, uh, six-hundred-and-thirteen being Hispanic or Latino, and a hundred-and-eighty-one being African-American. Um, on the right side, you see the positivity rate, uh, and you can see that our Hispanic or Latino, which is in the light blue, is the substantial, uh, is, uh, the majority of, of the positive rate. So to break it down for you by ethnicity as it relates to positivity, our Hispanic population being tested through our drive-through has an eight-point-six percent rate of positivity. Uh, our African-American is four-point-four percent, our white is one percent, and our Asian-American is zero percent, uh, based on these, uh, two-thousand-seven-hundred cases. So again, substantial differences when it relates to, uh, to race and ethnicity, uh, and again, uh, in the same population that is experiencing, uh, higher rates of positivity, we have higher rates of hospitalization, uh, and, uh, and again, that do, that is due in, in part to the underlying disparities in health, access to healthcare, access to, uh, uh, food, and, uh, a number of other, uh, uh, issues that are related to the social determinants of health. So again, uh, we're grateful to our partners at, uh, Community Care for their outreach. We will continue, as, uh, Director Hayden said, uh, to enhance our outreach to these communities to, to really try to prevent infection from happening, number one, uh, but also to ensure that folks who, who are positive, uh, can separate themselves from their, their household to reduce that trans, that household transmission of disease. So again, this is where the isolation facility comes in. We're going to offer a hotel room to people, uh, with, that is free, that, that provides them food, provides them with access to the TV and internet, and, and really helps us to break that transmission cycle within the household, uh, that we really need people to take advantage of, uh, without the concern that, uh, that they're going to be, uh, charged or, you know, detected by authorities or what have you. Uh, so again, that is, that is a key piece. We also want to make sure that, that folks who are infected, uh, understand that, that they can access healthcare. They don't need to wait, uh, if they, you know, feel that they need to be hospitalized, they have chest pain, they have shortness of breath, their symptoms are getting worse. Those individuals need to seek out healthcare, either through nine-one-one or presenting themselves to, uh, to the ER and, uh, and calling in advance so that the, the team can be prepared for them. Uh, there is no reason to wait. Uh, we know that the, this progressive, this disease can be, uh, a bit, uh, it may be hard to detect for people. Uh, they may be subtly getting worse day by day. Uh, they may be getting confused, they may be getting shorter, uh, having short, uh, worsening shortness of breath, and those are warning signs that folks need to see, hi, seek a higher-level care, and it's really critical, uh, particularly in, in our folks who don't normally have access to care, to understand that the, the hospitals are there for them, they're prepared to take care of them, and, uh, there really shouldn't be a barrier. Uh, and, uh, we will continue to advocate for those messages, both through our, uh, Austin Public Health channels, through, you know, Community Care, as well as through our, our partners in the community who are working hard to, to provide outreach to these communities. Next slide, please. I do want to provide a, a, a brief, uh, update on, uh, on the Travis County jail. I do want to provide a brief update on the Travis County Jail. There's been a lot of press lately related to infections within jails. And we have been working with Travis County Jail and Sheriff Hernandez since the beginning when it comes to effective systems in place for the jail. So they implemented policy changes very early on to protect their inmate population. They designed a system that isolates individuals for 14 days before they're introduced into the general population. If those individuals develop symptoms consistent with COVID-19, they are tested, and they're only moved into the general population when it's clear that they are COVID-free. They made changes to official visits. So if an attorney comes, or there's a visit from law enforcement, primarily those have been transitioned to virtual whenever possible. When they do have to have in-person meetings, they require masking, and they try to maintain social distancing in addition to that masking to really try to decrease the transmission of infection. When possible, they also have the physical barriers between the two individuals meeting to further enhance that reduction in transmission. They've done things like staggering group meetings. They clean between the meetings for individuals who are still in the isolation phase. They have activities which are separate. Those activities are individual. And again, cleaning in between those sessions to really try to effectively control the spread of the disease. Same thing is true for medical evaluations. They have a limited number of people being evaluated for medical conditions at a time. Those individuals are spaced out and limited to 10. In addition to this, we are working with the sheriff and the jail to look at ongoing models for testing for inmates as well as staff. We have been challenged, unfortunately, due to the levels of testing kits and testing capacity throughout this epidemic. And as we are increasing our capacity to do testing, you're seeing that we're advancing the testing for nursing homes. And the same thing is true for our jail population. So we're working closely with them... Excuse me. So we're meeting later this week to discuss avenues on how we might provide a long-term strategy for testing for that population. Next slide, please. We are finalizing our strategy, our long-term strategy for testing through the end of 2020. And part of that is a discussion with the University of Texas in relation to a seroprevalence study. So the seroprevalence study is the antibody-based testing. And we've asked them to put together a study proposal which spans 18 months. So we're looking at general population seroprevalence as well as... Excuse me a second. As well as some subpopulations, including first responders and healthcare workers, persons experiencing homelessness, college students, and essential workers. So looking at the community as a whole and looking at these subpopulations. There are a number of specific aims there of the study. The first is validation of between the tests that's drawn and sent off to lab versus a point-of-care test that can be done outside of a lab. And then looking at the seroprevalence rate in Austin, and then that longitudinal study, looking at those groups over a period of time to give us a better idea of how to manage policy based upon seroprevalence of antibody studies. So you should be seeing this coming in a proposal as a portion of our overall testing strategy for this pandemic. Next slide, please. And again, finally, this is the public enrollment address. This is our austin texas.gov/covid19. Folks can sign up for free evaluation, free testing. And this is really a critical step in allowing us to control this outbreak. It is free, and we really want folks to sign up if they're concerned. We have the ability to test folks who are asymptomatic, particularly if they have had exposure to COVID-19. So regardless of if individuals think that we're going to test them, please sign up, please fill out the survey. And based upon our evaluation, appropriate folks will be offered a test. It's free of charge, and we want to encourage the community to go to this site and sign up. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eskad. And again, we'll be taking questions at the end of the total report. And so I'm going to ask Director Hayden to introduce our partners at Central Health and Community Care for the next part of our presentation. Director Hayden?
Thank you, Spencer. We are very excited to have Central Health with us, Community Care here with us today. They are such an invaluable partner. They have continued to provide so many services to our vulnerable populations. I have Dr. Jason Fornier, and he will be providing the presentation. And I understand he has two additional staff persons with him, and they will be available for questions as well. So I will turn it over to him and his staff. Thank you again for being here with us today.
Need to unmute, Jason.
Okay, we were coming through the... Spencer, can you hear me?
We can. It's a little muffled, but maybe speak a little bit closer to the microphone.
A little better now? Okay, great. Sorry, guys, little technical difficulties. Well, thanks so much for that introduction, Ms. Hayden. Good morning, councilmembers and Mayor Adler. I'm going to go ahead and share our screen. Joining me this morning is our Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Alan Salsha, and also our Chief Operating Officer, Yvonne Camarena. And so, and also on the phone is Mr. Mike Geislin, who's the President and CEO for Central Health, and Ted Burton. They're going to go through a couple of slides towards the end. Okay, so the agenda this morning, so again, good morning, everyone. So the agenda this morning is just we're really going to provide an update from Community Care's perspective as it relates to our overall response to the coronavirus pandemic, including where we are with our clinical operations, and most importantly, our testing initiatives. And myself, Dr. Salsha, and Yvonne are going to go ahead and tag-team this this morning. And then again, Mike and Ted are going to follow up with some keynotes and points from Central Health's perspective. I think before jumping in and talking specifically as it relates to Community Care Health Center's response to coronavirus pandemic, I think it's important for councilmembers and audience at large just to better understand Community Care. We are a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit that partners with Central Health. Central Health, similar to the city of Austin, as some of you may know, years ago was the recipient of a federal grant award through the federal health center program. It's authorized through the Public Health Services Act, Section 330, longstanding program in terms of community health centers across the country. The major purpose of the health center program is to connect lower resourced, lower-income, uninsured and underinsured communities with the primary condition they deserve. And so here at Community Care, we have the privilege and honor of caring for Travis County residents, Austin residents, who are lower-income, lower-resourced, and uninsured or underinsured. In 2019, we provided care to 116,175 unique individuals for almost 400,000 contacts or patient visits with a medical provider, dental provider, or behavioral health provider. Currently operate 27 clinics across the area. The vast majority of them are located in the city of Austin proper. But we do operate both outside the city of Austin, within Travis County, and we actually have two clinics now outside Travis County as well, one in Bastrop and one in Round Rock. When we take a look at our overall services, it's only possible because of the strong partnerships we have. And so our relationship with Central Health is that they, similar to the city of Austin years ago, is the actual grantee with the federal grant award as a health center program. But given nuances relative to governance, Community Care actually is operating, and we have our own separate board of directors that's responsible for the day-to-day operations and governance relative to that. And so certainly, our board of directors, our partners at Central Health, as well as our relationship with Austin Public Health, has really gone ahead and helped us support the communities that we're so privileged to serve. One of the things that we have at Community Care that's extremely important to us is our vision, which is really achieving health equity for all. And a lot of what we're going to be talking about relative to coronavirus really is about how we're trying to maintain and increase and strengthen the health and wellbeing of the communities we serve at the same time while achieving greater health equity. So throughout our entire response, councilmembers and Mayor Adler, what we've had at the floor of...
It's cutting out for us. Mayor, you're muted.
Mayor, you're on mute.
It would help if I would mute.
I'm muted too.
Dr. Fornier, we're not hearing you. You've tailed off. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that would be good. Thank you. Now I can't hear you.
I'm on mute.
Yes, we can hear you now. And we lost you as you were beginning to get to this slide. But now you're unmuted. Now you're muted again. I think you need to unmute and turn off your phone. Try speaking now. Dr. Fornier?
Yes, we're...
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So sorry about that. We thought we'd be safer to hand around the phone so you can hear us, but we'll go through the computer. My apologies. The new norm for all of us. So what I was saying is that as I advanced this slide, our goal here at Community Care is really to go ahead and strengthen the health and wellbeing of the communities we serve. Coupled to that is we have core as our mission, strengthening and looking at achieving health equity for all within the community. And that really reflects our response relative to the coronavirus pandemic. And one of the things that we've looked at from very early on in our planning that dates back to February relative to preparations for coronavirus was really our top priorities of looking at how do we safeguard the health and wellbeing of both our patients who are coming and egressing into our facilities and our staff as well. And key to that, and very early on to the response, was making sure we had adequate access to personal protective equipment. Another top priority for us was ensuring that we had access and maintenance of our access to our healthcare services, especially as coronavirus became more prevalent within the community at large, and we were looking at protective measures both for our staff and for patients. And so coupled to that was communication strategies, both internal and then also external. And we wanted to make sure that key to our response, as always, is looking at data to inform our decision-making, inclusive of how our services were being rendered, how they needed to change and adapt to the new normal that evolved with coronavirus. And then also coupled to that is how we were going to use data to inform our testing strategies. And so some of the mitigation steps that we put in very early on really involved and based on Dr. Eskad and APH's directive, really taking a look at how folks are entering into our facilities, inclusive of our staff members who were screening twice daily, but everyone who comes into our facilities being pre-screened. So we're actively monitoring folks that way. Pleased to say that we've had 12 of our staff members, and 12 sounds like too many, actually one is too many, but 12 of our staff members have tested positive to date. Of those 12, though, we do know that 11 were most likely contracted through community exposure as opposed to within our environment, and one individual perhaps within our environment. So I think that speaks to these guidance that's come through APH, really in terms of protecting not only our staff and the healthcare workers that are putting themselves and their families on the line, but also our patients that are coming through. We also, very early on, as many of you are aware, set up a coronavirus hotline that wasn't directed just to our patients, but was directed to community members at large, but in particular to individuals who are uninsured or underinsured, and especially as those that lacked a primary care provider. We made the assumption that our patients would know how to find us because they find us regularly, but we also wanted to make sure that we were extending that out. So that number's 512-978-8775. It's operating every day of the week still, and we're averaging anywhere from 300 to 400 calls a day when we take a look at that. Also, very early on into our response, we implemented drive-through testing. And Dr. Salsha will talk about our Hancock drive-through testing in just a moment. But we also went ahead and transitioned the majority of our services to telephonic and telemedicine. And Dr. Salsha has the next slide. So he's going to talk specifically to telephonic and telemedicine, and just how rapid we went ahead and made that switch. So Alan, please.
Good morning all. Are you muted? No. Good morning all. Thanks for the opportunity to share information with you all. Pre-COVID, we saw about 2,000 patients a day. Once COVID hit, we transitioned our non-critical origin patients out of clinic while we tried to catch up or play catch-up and learn how to prepare our environment to keep it as safe as possible. Within the span of four to five days, we transitioned to a telephonic and a video-based care model, and we now conduct about 70% of our care remotely. And we're seeing between 1,300 and 1,400 patients a day. In mid-March, we also stood up our Hancock drive-through testing site. That site was selected as it was central to the patients that we serve. To date, we've had over 4,000 individuals visit that site, both patients and non-patients. We've tested a little over 70%, and we've tested about 3,000 individuals. We follow CDC guidelines as far as testing. As the availability of tests has become, or as tests have become more available, still we've been able to liberalize our testing and go from kind of the highest priority groups to lower priority groups.
Mayor, I think we're getting some echo, and it might be you and Jason needing to mute.
Hi there. I'm Dr. Fornier. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Community Care.
We have people that have their computers on and their phones on. You can only have one source at a time, as we're getting an echo.
It's highlighting for me Jason's screen, and so... I have to call you out, Mr. Fornier, but it might be... If you could find a way to mute.
Hey, it's okay, councilmember.
Mayor, you're muted.
Could you just wait for me?
I'm muted right now. Okay, I'm glad.
We're going to do it the old-fashioned way, guys. Can you hear us? We're shutting down all that technology that's external.
So we're sharing off one computer, so hopefully you can hear me fine now. Okay, great. Okay, all right. So I'm going to go through a few slides here very quickly that I think are real informative related to additional testing and some demographic information. So we did want you to be aware that beyond just our Hancock location, we did expand to the Eastern Crescent sites to expand testing along. So we have four sites there, and then we also have two drive-up sites. Overall, we've screened over 500 people and tested a little over 480 individuals. And the demographic information and the breakdown is there for your review. And so the other thing we'd also like to be able to demonstrate is then overall what are positivity rates? How they're presenting, obviously by gender, race, and ethnicity. So I'll go through some of these slides very quickly for your review. The first thing is that you can see overall that we have a slightly higher rate of positivity, or excuse me, testing for males than females. or excuse me, testing for males than females, and some of the reasons for that have been reviewed over the previous presentations. Also, we wanted to review regarding age as far as positivity. You can see we have 653 individuals in the highest age group, which is 18 to 64 range. And what you should take from this is these are the individuals who are presenting to the testing center, and this is the age range that we have. And you can see how that compares as far as the overall positivity rate based on age. We also want to discuss as far as the comparisons of individuals who are CUC, Community Care patients, to those of the general public who are coming to the testing center. So what you can see overall that our positivity rates, they're near each other, but they're slightly higher for our non-CUC patients. We had a higher discrepancy between the two early on, but we're starting to see an increase in the CUC numbers. I think it's also important, the percentages as far as, this is always based on the number of tests that have been returned, and there's always a gap related to the return rate because, you know, from the time you collect the test to when you get the results back on that as well.
And so we're switching over to Dr. Shalsha now.
All right. Hello again. When we look at our positivity rate, you can see we've had a rate that has been transitioning, but transitioning as far as increasing, really through the middle of March. The positivity rate by ethnicity, you can see the high rate as far as our Latinx patient population, and we'll get into more specifics in a second. And then again, through the beginning of March, you can see our transition. April, the end of April through the first week in May was kind of our high point with 21.41% as far as positivity rate, and we're a little over 19% now. Again, that rate has been gradually increasing. When looking at those individuals who are African-American, who have visited our testing sites, at the end of April, we had a positivity rate of about 3.5%. And you can look at the 10% increase from that date to May 10th through May 16th. Now, please notice that we had two individuals who were positive then, and we have six individuals who tested positive the next, you know, that week later. So the N is really small, though that positivity rate has definitely increased. For the white only, you can see, again, another jump in the positivity rate. Here, the testing number actually was lower than the week before. The number of individuals found positive was one more than the week before. For our Latinx population, you can see the trend has been gradually increasing. The week of April 26 to May 2 was our highest point. During that week, we had a couple different construction sites that visited our testing site, and one of the examples that I've given previously is we had one construction company in which 48 individuals visited our site, and 26 tested positive. And you can see our positivity rate now is still a little over 24%. Testing by week, as far as looking at individuals who are not our patients versus our patients, again, you can see a gradual increase as related to the positivity rate.
So I think council members, Mayor Adler, Ms. Hayden, and Mr. Kronk, when you take a look at this data and Dr. Esq., we've got some trends that are pretty indicative of what we're seeing within our testing sites. Not just with our Hancock testing site where we've actually provided almost 3,000 unique tests, but across our system, the end of last week, we're at almost 4,600 unique tests that were provided, and we're averaging right now between about 150 to 200 tests across our system. The trends are, again, specific to those that were seen within our clinics, our health centers, within our testing sites, but we do think that it's indicative of where coronavirus is within the communities we serve. And so we can't underscore that enough. We think that when we're taking a look at this data and knowing that things are opening back up, we think it's extremely important for us not only to continue the testing that we've been doing, but also to expand that testing. So to give you a snapshot, just from a geocode perspective, this is all our tests, this is a heat map that you're looking at, and this is giving you an idea of the testing that we've done to date, and this is actually from late last week, so there's probably another 500, 600 tests that have occurred in the intervening time. But with that stated, what you're looking at here, and what we want to see is because the patients and populations we serve, and the communities we serve, are mostly east of I-35 or north along Runburg, North Austin, and then into the eastern portion of Travis County and into what's known and referred to since 2015 as the Eastern Crescent, based on the city demographers work. When we take a look at that, we're seeing testing hitting a lot of the areas that we would want to see. We're seeing down in the Dove Springs community, we're seeing Riverside, Montopolas, we're seeing Dell Valley, we're seeing Austin's Colony and Hornsby Bend, Maynor, and these are all sites in the Eastern Crescent where we have testing, Colony Park as well, and then St. John's, and then Runburg and North Austin is what you're seeing as well. And then, of course, we're seeing a little bit as we go ahead and we take a look further. So we also took a look at, and this is as Dr. Shalsha indicated, you know, I think the week-by-week data has been the most informative to us. What are we seeing week in and week out? And that's something now we've been doing, council members, for probably the last four weeks or so, as we're trying to go ahead and position ourselves in terms of being more responsive and looking at trends that are emerging within the community, but at the same time, testing overall. One of the unique things you might not have picked up is that 56% of our tests have actually been provided to non-Community Care patients. So let me repeat that again. 56% of our tests have not been provided to Community Care patients, but to community members at large, but the other 44% have. And so when we took a look at the top 10 ZIP codes with all of those 41, we've had 4,133 tests returned as of this data being analyzed yesterday morning. So that was with results that were trickling in from last week, really from Thursday, Friday, we didn't have the results, so really to reflect of last Wednesday. When we take a look at this, this is the top 10 ZIP codes, and you can see that there's a percentage next to it. So I'll look up at Flugerville as an example at the top right there. So you've got ZIP code 78660. Our positivity rate, these are for folks that we've tested either in that health center or at one of our testing sites or one of our other health centers. Out of the 148 Flugerville residents from 78660, 25 have tested positive at 16.9%. And as you look through, you can see that our highest level right now is sitting at 26.8%, which is in 78752, which is the St. John's community. And then when you get down further into the Dove Springs community, we're seeing in 78744, 78741. So you're seeing some areas where we see a higher positivity. Again, mindful of the fact that if we were to do similar to Dr. Esq. and try to control by the population, because this is a little misleading when it's just positivity, we now need to overlay this data frankly with the census track, or sorry, the ZIP code population overall, and say, okay, well, for the testing we've done there, here's the per 1,000 or per 10,000 rate that we're seeing relative to our tests. And that's something that we'll plan on doing into the future. But it gives you an idea at least, at a very high level in terms of what our testing's revealing, just indicating that we set the threshold of you had to have within a community, within one of these ZIP codes, you had to have at least 25 positives as the floor in order for it to hit in the top 10, because, you know, we would have a ZIP code where we tested three or four individuals in totality out of the 4,133 tests that we've had back, and of that, you could have two that came back positive and saying it's a positive rate of 50. Of course, there isn't statistical significance or power when we're looking at small numbers like that. So the other part that's critically important to us here at Community Care with our partnership at Austin Public Health, and we see our role as really just being complimentary to what great job, and I can't commend Dr. Esq. and Ms. Hayden and all of the staff at APH. This is really, as Spencer indicated, these are unprecedented times. This is a very fluid position. If you'd asked us here as three leaders from Community Care, six weeks ago, if 70% of our, well, eight weeks ago, we've been at this more than six weeks, hard to believe that too, but eight weeks ago, that 70% of our clinical services would be occurring via telemedicine or telephonically, I think we would have all shook our head and said, there's no way. And so our ability to do this is based on the partnerships, the gap fill where needed, but also relying on our 1,100-plus employees, contracted folks who are coming through and really supporting the community. They're really the folks who are doing the hard work on the front line and really heroes in terms of providing that care. But one of the things we think, as do our partners at Austin Public Health and health authorities from across the country, nationally and globally, is we all need to be doing more testing. And so a little bit over a week ago, we worked with partners at Centene Health Insurers. So if you don't know Centene Health, Centene is a national insurance company. More locally, they're Superior Health Plan, and they really work in the Medicaid space, a very large insurer nationally. Many, many millions of lives covered through their various different health insurance programs. Through a partnership with Centene and Quest Diagnostics, we were able to secure an additional commitment for another 1,000 tests per week. And I think we'll be able to get more than that as we continue to move forward, but then immediately moved us from being able to have a baseline of 600 tests per week to now 1,600 tests. The other thing that was unique about that is we got their engagement, and honestly, it didn't take much for them to get to this, and their permission to use those tests for asymptomatic testing, which is atypical, right? Very early on, when you look at some of the earlier graphics we put up, our testing was very limited. When we were in mid-March, we were testing, you know, 50, 60 individuals a week when we first started, because that's what we can get our hands on relative to testing kits and media. We struggled, like so many other providers did across the nation, in securing those much-needed materials. And at that point in time, we were testing folks who were high-risk, considered, based on CDC guidelines, over the age of 60, or immunocompromised. Now, today, and for the last three to four weeks, if you showed up at one of our testing sites and you were symptomatic, there was a very strong likelihood, well, not a strong likelihood, but you were guaranteed you were going to get a test. And even if you were asymptomatic with no exposure, you might have gotten tested based on where our testing was. Well, with the commitment from Centene, we also wanted to go ahead and look at testing asymptomatic individuals within our health centers. So these are folks who are coming into our clinics, who are completely asymptomatic for coronavirus-like symptoms, that's fever, cough, things that you've heard from Dr. Esq. and others, and with no known exposure. And so this is very preliminary data. This number is small overall, but this, again, demonstrates our ability here at Community Care to ingest the data relative to our own testing, put it into a format that can then inform what's going on. So when we look at the top graphic here, this is for the time period of Thursday, May 8th through Friday, May 14th, mindful of the fact that about 40% of the tests that were conducted during that period are still outstanding. They'll hit as of yesterday or today or tomorrow in terms of our return time, it's usually about 72 hours right now. But when we take a look at this top one, this is all Community Care testing sites. You can see for asymptomatic individuals with no exposure, so they're not aware of having been exposed to anyone. When we've tested, our total amount of tests have come back positive at 5.5%. That's actually higher than the 2.3% at the community level Dr. Esq. mentioned. It's a little disconcerting. We're not quite sure what it means yet because it's such a small number, but when we control for, and it could be frankly, the fact that when we're data-entering this in at our testing sites, we're checking this to make sure that there isn't just an oversight and making sure that we're capturing those symptoms. In the health centers, the bottom graphic is really, this was a new initiative as of last week, so as patients were coming into our facilities, we were asking them if they were asymptomatic and no known exposure, if they'd like to get tested for a coronavirus. Now, that's different than what CDC had provided as guidance up until two weeks ago. As of last Monday, Centers for Disease Control and Prevention issued a guidance that one of the high priority groups for asymptomatic testing was individuals that are drawn from racial and ethnic minority groups, and so that aligns with our patient population. And so we are still adherent to CDC guidelines. That's important to us. These are scarce resources, but based on the guidance from CDC and the fact that we were seeing in our own trend, data, a higher burden of coronavirus positivity than the community at large, we felt it was important to try to get a baseline within our patients. Again, very preliminary, down at the bottom for our health centers, we're seeing an overall positivity rate of 1.39%, so these, again, are folks no symptoms, no known exposure. We had one individual at a 72 test positive. That's a very low number. We're kind of pushing statistical significance here. We're not there yet. Overall, depending on which epidemiologist or statistician, this is going to roll forward. We'll have a better idea by the end of this week, as we'll have gotten to several hundred of asymptomatic patients tested, so we'll have a better idea of what that looks like within our care environments. It dramatically shifts when we start looking at all of our testing sites on this slide for individuals who are symptomatic with no exposure, and that's the top. So overall, if you're symptomatic and you present to either our health center or one of our testing sites, the positivity rate when someone's symptomatic and with no exposure is 22.83%. When there's a symptom, the bottom parts, or the bottom graphic, when you look at someone who has symptoms with a known exposure, so this is a household member, a loved one, or maybe a coworker who's tested positive, and the individual presents to us with a symptom, you can see for our patients, that's coming in at 44%. Again, the number's fairly low, but, you know, it's indicative of the overall testing that's occurring. So we try not to read into too much, but at the same time, we're trying to look at this to say, there is a trend here, and we need to be paying close attention to this. And when we take a look at that, almost 44% for Community Care patients who present with symptoms and known exposure are testing positive, comparative to 20% of non-Community Care patients testing positive, with an overall positivity rate of 28.21%. So when we take a look at this, how does this information inform us and how it should be used to inform potential initiatives that are being endorsed by the council, by Austin Public Health? I think this speaks very critically to contact tracing, that as soon as we identify case, symptoms, exposures, it's imperative. You look down at the bottom or the top, symptomatic with no exposure coming through, right, even on the part where they're asymptomatic, we do have asymptomatic with exposure, we're not showing that right now, but symptomatic with exposure, you know, contact tracing is going to be critically important. So Dr. Shalsha, if you don't mind, just talking a little bit about what we're doing with contact tracing and how we're stepping that up, and just so that there's awareness around council members as it relates to our partnership with Austin's Public Health, which we're really pleased and happy about being able to support your work, the great work the city's doing.
Thank you. So Dr. Esq. referred to some of the work that's being done by us in collaboration with UT. We are transitioning to, and Ms. Hayden referred to this as well, to set up our own tracing environment, partnering with Central Health. As we increase the number of tests for our community, we want to make sure that we are really culturally sensitive as far as when we approach the indexed patients and then ensure that we trace all of their contacts. So in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be putting a lot of effort in working with our partners, setting that up, so that we can make sure that folks that are in contact with others who have a positive diagnosis, don't spread that diagnosis and stay home.
And thanks for all your work and efforts for that, Dr. Shalsha, and Givonne and her team, all the work around this. I think, you know, some key takeaways from the information we just shared with you. So overall, we're seeing a positivity rate that is not consistent with what we're seeing in the general community, and we would go ahead and surmise that that is directly related to the communities that we serve and the communities that are also seeking testing through our sites. As a well-established, trusted provider within the community, and in particular within our racial and ethnic, for our racial and ethnic neighbors and brothers and sisters, I think that they know they can come get tested through us. The other thing is, is our drive-through testing from very early on, you didn't have to have a referral, it was open, you don't have to complete anything, you show up, we're going to screen you onsite. Now, that means you might wait a little longer, but folks have been very patient with us. I think the other key takeaways is that we're seeing trends from our perspective that are worrisome within our patient populations in the-- are worrisome within our patient populations in the communities we're privileged to serve, and specifically within our Latinx community, where we're seeing a run rate from the beginning of around 24% positivity for those that were testing, noting that it's skewed based on, you know, a construction company referring folks down to us. And so even when we start controlling for that, it's still at a higher rate than the community at large. And it means that we need to do a better good job collectively here at Community Care and at large within the community, in terms of how are we going to approach containment and mitigation strategies, especially around folks through their, no fault of their own, that just simply have access to less resources. And so part of that's about messaging. And so we've really relied on our internal resources, but also our partners at Central Health, who have been terrific to work and support us with this, in terms of looking at what are effective communication strategies, both using our internal patient database, but also looking at community at large. And I know Mr. Geislin and Mr. Burton are going to talk about that, so I'm going to hand this over to them. I'm going to mute my mic here, so that they can go ahead and to speak.
Good morning. This is Ted Burton, and I'm Vice President of Communications at Central Health. Can you hear me okay? Great. So we, as Jason mentioned, Central Health's communications and community engagement team has been working extremely close with Community Care to create a unified and integrated communications approach to share critical information through multiple channels, always in English and Spanish. And so from grassroots, on-the-ground outreach and community engagement to paid media, specifically targeting our patient population, so people 200% or below the federal poverty level. I'm just going to hit a few highlights. So we completed Phase 1 of a media campaign that ran April through May, and we are about to launch tomorrow Phase 2 of a media initiative. I would like to say that we are working with the City of Austin, in fact, I have a meeting this afternoon, to make sure that our media plans are coordinated and complementary with each other, and so that's happening today. But just a real quick recap of what we've done. We had a heavy emphasis on radio, and so again, in English and Spanish, and our target audience was the Latino community and the African-American community, again, families with low income. I can provide much more detail if you'd like it, but essentially, we had produced spots, DJ reads, and then we did a lot of recorded interviews, and we're continuing to do that in English and Spanish. And those interviews run periodically throughout the day, throughout the day. So for the first phase of this initiative, we had nearly 470 spots and reached 65% of our target audience five times a week, so really good saturation. And again, that radio will kick off again next Monday, but tomorrow, we begin a digital online initiative. We've also been doing a lot of earned media, so press releases about one a week, always in English and Spanish. And then, next slide, please. And then a lot of social media. I would encourage you to go to centralhealth.net to look at our COVID-19 page. There's a lot of shareable social media content there that we produced in-house and with our consultants, and we are in the midst of producing more. And this paid social media campaign is targeted at 10 ZIP codes that Jason mentioned, highest concentration of people with low income, and highest concentration of positivity rates. So using infographics, videos, we had 1.3 million impressions through April. Regarding community engagement and grassroots outreach, our community advisor committees have all moved into the virtual realm. In fact, we hosted a community conversation last night, a virtual community conversation, talking about how COVID-19 is going to impact our 2021 budget and strategic priorities. We've been, we launched a new texting initiative, so all of our paid media has a texting component where you can opt in, and we'll text you information about testing sites, resources, et cetera. And as I mentioned, the next phase of our media campaign will have a heavy focus on the Latinx community and low-wage workers, including construction workers. So talking about how to get tested, the COVID hotline number, what happens if you test positive. But we also want to address some of these really critical barriers that might prevent somebody from getting tested, acknowledging that there is a fear of testing, there's a fear of testing positive and not being able to work, not being able to earn a living and care for your family. So we want to talk about that and explain what can happen if you do test, how to protect your family, how to isolate so you don't infect your family, especially for families who may be multi-generational or living under one roof. So that, and again, we'll coordinate this media buy with Austin Public Health. Next slide. We also, one back, yes, we also conducted a direct mail campaign. There were three phases, and we're going to begin another round here in the next couple of weeks. But the direct mail pieces, we reached 119, I'm sorry, 40,000 households three times. And so there was three phases, talking about how to protect yourself, including how to wear a face mask, staying home, and staying six feet away. There was a direct mail piece that was about care and coverage, and so, and a direct mail piece that was all about testing, promoting the hotline, where to get testing and what to expect. And so that direct mail piece will continue. And then just real quickly on some of the grassroots outreach, to reach hard-to-reach vulnerable populations, we have community health workers that are calling our medical access members, members who don't have access to the internet, who often don't speak English, and so explaining to them how they can protect themselves and their families, where to get tested, how to access healthcare over the telephone. And we've heard that using a local 512 number to make these calls has been vital. Anecdotally, people tell us they wouldn't have answered the call if they didn't see a local number. We're doing outreach to immigrant organizations, making sure they can help share information. And then we've been calling the construction industry, so construction companies and organizations that work within that industry to share information about testing in a one-page flyer. And right now, we're in the process of producing outreach kits that will include flyers and posters, and we're going to mail those to small businesses like La Mexicana and other small businesses that cater to the Latino community. So that's in the works now. And then we are beginning a video series that is going to feature high-profile Latino leaders, respected Latino leaders, "Cino-Stoca", which is take care of ourselves, take care of our families. And so it's a turn on, what we've heard anecdotally, people say that if it's our turn, it's our turn, like there's nothing we can do about that. So we want to take that and turn it into a positive message about it's our turn to take care of ourselves, our families, and our communities. So that video series is in the works, and I hope that we'll have something to put out probably by early next week, and put some money behind it to get it out as far and wide as possible. And with that, I will pause and hand it over to Mike Geislin.
Thank you, Ted. I'm Mike Geislin, President and CEO of Central Health, and want to thank the council and everyone for having us this morning. Real briefly, I want to talk about our enrollments in our Medical Access Program, in our Medical Access Basic Program, also known as MAP and MAP Basic. As you can see, I'm going to focus on the lower right-hand corner. Enrollments have increased, and that's due for a number of reasons. One, as you think about what's happening economically and families needing access to healthcare coverage. Two, we've also extended enrollment by 90 days for over 16,000 MAP and MAP Basic members. Typically, enrollment lasts for six months, but by extending that enrollment, we were making sure that people's coverage didn't accidentally lapse, so that they went without coverage. It's important to maintain the continuity of coverage during a pandemic. And then the other reason is just very robust outreach and telephonic services. So as Ted pointed out, we are reaching out to communities of color and making sure that people understand in culturally appropriate ways how to enroll in MAP, but also being able to make it easy to enroll in MAP. And that means using telephone, we've launched an app which enables people to enroll, and that's been very successful for us, because again, people don't have to leave their houses or come into the enrollment sites, they can do so from their house safely. Next slide, please. And I want to apologize, I'm not seeing the slides on my screen.
We are not either.
It's gone dark. Everybody has that slide set that was...
I can start speaking to what I recall is, they, these next set of slides, it should be a set of graphs that show... Does anybody have a visual on the slide?
Medical access and sliding fee scale programs? CH patients, CH gender?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So what these graphs were showing is, it's a snapshot into the Medical Access and Medical Access Basic Programs. We tend to trend younger with our population falling between the 18 and 45 or 49 category. We are predominantly Hispanic, over 66%, Latinx, and then probably in descending order, looking at Anglo and then African-American enrollments. We also are, we have a higher percentage of female enrollees by gender identity as opposed to male by gender identity. Then again, I don't recall off the top, I don't have those slides in front of me, but that just gives you a sense about who we are. And as noted earlier, our mission is, by providing care to those who need it most, we're able to provide a healthy community. And we focus at 200% and below federal poverty level, and this is critical, because we're privileged to take care of some of the most vulnerable in our communities. And as we continue through this pandemic, we're going to continue supporting the Emergency Operations Center and the various task forces that we either are providing staff resources to or monitoring, and we'll continue to support Community Care, not only logistically, where necessary through technology and facility support, but also in outreach, as Mr. Burton had pointed out. We want to make sure that we're connecting with people, however you present yourself and see yourself, whether it's by race, ethnicity, gender, identity, orientations, we want to make sure that we're connecting with people in appropriate ways, so that we can get the message out about how to be tested, how to get care, but also how to protect yourself and your family and friends as well. So that concludes our presentation, and I know we're a little bit over time, but want to thank everybody for giving us the opportunity to have this discussion with you today.
Manager, do you, thank you very much. Thank you. Manager, is there more to the presentation, or should we go to the colleagues to do quick rounds of questions?
Mayor, council, you can go to the colleagues for questions. That concludes the presentation on the public health-related elements of this morning. So again, can't emphasize enough the collaboration and partnership that we have with Central Health and Community Care, and so thank you for being here to share your experiences with the council.
Okay. I don't know, Dr. Eskat, how long you're going to be able to stay with us? I don't know, are you still with us?
Mayor, I believe you did have to step off to go to community court.
Okay. Let's go around, we don't have a lot of time, so if everybody, we're just going to have one question, and we'll just keep going around in circles to think of your most important question, and we'll whip our way through. Councilmember Ellis, you want to start with your first question?
Yes, let me make sure I'm unmuted, and I'm sorry that Dr. Eskat had to step off. He may be the one to best answer this, but I had seen that there was three clusters within medical laboratories, and I was wondering if that was in relation to a COVID testing lab, or if that was some sort of other diagnostic testing, or if there was any indication that it came in through other points of contact and just happened to be shown there.
Director Hayden, can you answer that question?
Yes, it actually came in through other points of testing, not the laboratories where we are processing the testing.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Garza, you have a question?
I was unaware of all the community outreach and engagement that Central Health is doing, so thank you. And was wondering if, you know, we've, you know, Dr. Eskat has really highlighted on almost every single meeting that we've had, the disparities, the racial disparities that we're seeing, and because Central Health has done such significant work in that outreach, you may not be aware, but we have, members of the Latino community have reached out and asked, you know, for a task force of some sort, they're wanting to help, they're wanting to help and boost our efforts and community engagement efforts. And so I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, has members of the Hispanic community reached out to Central Health and asked for a similar task force? And I'm wondering if maybe that's the best place for that to take place, because of all the great work that y'all are doing in that area, and give them the opportunity to be part of boasting those, of your efforts?
I'll start to answer that and then ask others to chime in, please. That's an excellent question, and actually, the communication has been two-way. We've reached out to leaders in communities, Latinx, African-American, and also by Neighborhood Association as well, to be able to connect with people, but they've also reached out to us and been invaluable in terms of providing us insight and, you know, how to work through this, these types of situations. So I would say that we've benefited from a very robust two-way communication, but, and that's going to be essential as we continue to go forward. Specifically asked to form a task force? No, ma'am, at least not to my knowledge. I think that just we're running at 90 miles an hour, pressing out as much content as we can, but if there's some pivots that we need to make to be able to support what the city and the county are doing, we'll certainly do that. I would recommend that if there is going to be a task force, that there be one, and that be organized underneath Austin Public Health or the EOC, however that shakes out, but you get too many task forces, you start pulling on the same resources and too many Zoom meetings, and you lose productivity. But that's my initial response to your excellent question.
I just quick follow-up. So thank you for that. I think there is an opportunity to get some support for said task force. It's always great when people want to help, help the efforts, but I want to say thank you to Community Care and everyone for all the work that you're doing. I know Community Care has, I think, weekly updates. I was able to join one for a little bit, that is offered in both English and Spanish every week, so thank you all for all your efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Kitchen? What's your question?
Yes, I know, I only get one. So my question then, I'll ask Central Health, then, I'm wondering about coordination across, it's actually for Public Health, too, about coordination with the other safety net providers in the city, specifically People's Community Clinic, and the other, the other healthcare providers that are part of the, or have been in the past, part of the ICC, the Integrated Care Collaboration. I'm wondering if there's collaboration going on two fronts, both outreach and testing and the data coordination, because I'm particularly interested in wondering if there's a way to take the data for our testing, the data for Central Health testing, the data for People's Community Clinic, the data for the other safety net providers, to get a more complete picture. I think Central Health data is very, very, very instructive because of the community that you serve, but I'm wanting to understand whether there are efforts going on to look at the data across the community, to integrate the data, as well as to integrate the outreach. And I think the Mayor Protem's question about the task force is very helpful, and so I'd also be curious about the role of the ICC in any of this integration.
Well, I think on the data piece, I'll defer to Austin Public Health, and I know that there's been some data compilation and collection frameworks that are separate from the ICC, but I'd have to defer to others to answer that.
And we could ask Stephanie to speak to this. Councilmember Kitchen, Mike Benoît has been tasked... Councilmember Kitchen, Mike Benoît has been tasked with pulling everybody together in the community that's doing testing.
Okay.
The testing is in one place, and it's being reported, those systems have never been set up before, but it looks like now it is, it is in fact happening.
Okay, well, I mean, that's good, because these data, these different data buckets are helpful, but, but it would be more helpful to understand across the whole community what we're seeing.
And Councilmember Kitchen, this is Jason Fornia with Community Care here. Mayor Adler is absolutely correct, that task force has been stood up, it's functional, there've been two meetings that have occurred. Dr. Scholz and myself are participating directly with that in coordination, including gaining access to information through ICC, but across the disparate systems, and then having that all funnel up. So it's, it's a work in progress, we don't know what the timeline looks like for information to be produced out of that, but I would be guessing it's still probably several weeks away.
It's the ICC, it's all the hospital system, it's all the testing laboratories? And you're absolutely right.
Yes, I, I used to be executive director of the ICC, so I'm very familiar with it. So yes, Dr. Fornia, I'd like to talk to you offline some more about that.
More than happy to.
Yeah, so, and also I'd, I'd like to understand the other aspects of coordination that may be occurring with regard to outreach, for example, with regard to, you know, reaching out to the community and that sort of thing. And I think that Mayor Protem's question was important, so I'd like to see some coordination there also.
Thank you. Other questions, colleagues? Yes, Councilor Tovar.
I have, I have several, I think mine too is for Dr. Esq, who's left, but, but perhaps someone else on the call can answer this one. So in Dr. Esq's presentation, he had a slide about the non-institutional clusters. One, one involved restaurant retail, one involved construction. I'm trying to square that information with some other information we've received today and other information we've received in the media, and I'm not, I can't, I can't make that work from my angle, so perhaps Director Hayden might be able to answer, answer that question. The numbers, the numbers from Community Care, in, in their presentation, this is just an example, but in their presentation, you gave some numbers for one of the construction sites, for example, and those, and so I need to understand whether the non-institutional cluster site that was in Dr. Esq's presentation also reflect, is, is a different set of numbers or how, how those mesh. The other example I'm aware of, we've seen some media discussions, and I don't, I'm not going to offer specifics, but we've received some, some media reports about particular restaurants, and those numbers don't seem to be reflected in the non-institutional clusters in Dr. Esq's slide. So, so I wonder, Director Hayden, if you might be able to shed some light on the non-institutional clusters framework that Dr. Esq presented, and what numbers those are counting, and, and how that meshes with Community Care's information. And before I, before I end, I just want to say I do have questions about contract tracing. I've been getting some questions about that, and also I wanted to thank Director Hayden and our deputy city manager, and Sean Willett in purchasing, I know you had a very, very quick turnaround time in getting the, the AISD caregiver meals up and running, I believe those start today, and as, as many of you know, those are involving different conglomerations of local restaurants, so it's really a benefit all around, all of, all of those parties, both those who are delivering the meals as well as those who are receiving them. So really, huge thanks to our city staff for their extraordinary work on getting that happening.
Thank you. Colleagues, any additional questions before we go to the budget issues?
I had a question for our Public Health about that chart.
Okay.
Okay, the non-institutional clusters chart.
Yes, so, so basically, I'll, I'll start with the question between, the tie between what Community Care has presented versus what Austin Public Health has presented. I think one of the things to keep in mind is, is that their testing sites, as Dr. Scholz mentioned, they had a site where a, several, it was over 40, construction workers came over to that testing site, and they were from Williamson County. So they are having folks that are potentially coming over from another county, so that's one thing. The other thing is, is that we define a cluster as three or more cases, and so once a site has three or more cases, and with construction, it is very complex, because you, you have the general contractor, but then you may have folks that have smaller contracts, and so then we start to look at that specific part of the industry. So for example, with the plumbing, for example, there are two clusters with the, within two companies that we are working with. So it is a little bit more complex than just saying, you know, construction industry as a whole, because we have to look at the, the business itself, the business owner, the construction site, and so all of the complexities with that. And so I, I hope that answers your question, and I know Dr. Fornia may be able to add some additional information as well.
Well, Director Hayden, thank you, that, the, the question really is about the slide that Dr. Esq presented on 16. I think I have another clarification I need for that, and it's on page 16. So for example, under Division G, where it says Retail Trade Food Service, and it lists three.
Yes.
Is that three individuals or three clusters?
That, that is three clusters.
Ah, okay, so that, that I think is the clarification I needed to square the information that we're receiving on page 16 with the information that we may be getting through the media and other sources. And are these clusters cumulative, or are these current cases?
These, these are current because we are only, with this snapshot, we, and we took out the non, we took out all the nursing homes, and so this is only clusters between May 1st through May 17th.
I think that's really helpful information, and I, I appreciate this level of detail. I would suggest that in the future, maybe that be embedded within the presentation, those clarifications, both the dates and the, and some of that other information that we discussed. Thank you so much.
And we can do that, and as Dr. Esq mentioned earlier, when there, when there is stabilization and there's no more additional cases, the clusters fall off, and we, you know, go ahead and move to another set of clusters. So it's an evolving process.
That's really super helpful, thank you. And Mayor, I would, I would request that at some point during today's work session, we revisit the idea of that task force that several of my colleagues have mentioned. I know we are trying to get to questions for presenters right now, but I, I have several, several questions from my colleagues and potentially our city staff about that issue.
I'll make sure we discuss that, I think everybody wants to. For the questions, Councilmember Rintoria, other people raised their hands, so I'm going to go through additional people at this point. Councilmember Rintoria.
My question is, it's also with testing. We have, I've seen that we're getting more cases at construction sites. Is there any plan right now for y'all guys to go out there and test all construction workers, or is it just waiting until someone from one of these construction sites come in and test positive? And if they do, do y'all go and test all, all the now workers out there?
Councilmember Rintoria, our staff are developing a, a testing plan and strategy for construction sites moving forward, but as a, as a general practice, basically what the department does is, is that if there is one individual that tests positive at any employment site, we, we track that information. And so once it turns into a cluster, we contact the owner of that business, and we talk to them and let them know that you have three positive cases at your, at your, you know, at your site, your location, and basically recommend some strategies to mitigate. And amongst those strategies is, is that we, we will make a determination, if we need to go in and test more employees, if we need to check the screening that they have in, in place, any kind of documentation that they've kept up with. So it's a, a technical assistance type process as well, because we want to ensure that they are adhering to those safety practices. But with construction, we are looking to do some additional fights.
So y'all actually waiting until there's actually three active cases on that location before y'all go and test all the rest of the workers?
Yes.
Is that because you can't get hold of the test, or is it because you have to have permission of the, of the contractors?
Well, it's, it's a combination of several things. One, I mean, we don't have, we have several priorities that have been set, and so we have to make sure that we are addressing each of the priorities as much as we can. So between the nursing home tests and the long-term care tests, the, the, the request from the jails, the request from the construction industry, the general population that we need to do, the ability to do mobile testing, and so we have so many priorities, and we don't have enough people to be able to do all of those, all of that testing, or the testing kits to be able to do it. So we have to set a, a, a process where we do prioritize.
So it's a combination, it's a combination of both, that you don't have enough tests because there's not enough tests available out there to do that?
There, there's not enough tests.
Mayor, this is, this is, Leslie, I can't tell if you can see my hand.
That's all I have, man. Councilmember Harper-Madison, Councilmember Poole, and Councilmember Alt.
Thank you, Tara, I appreciate it. I, I actually think Councilmember Rintoria got part of my question answered, and so the, the other part of the question would be, well, first of all, this is a really, really informative presentation, it was very helpful, but I still walk away with the, the question about access, both people being able to get to the site to be tested. I'm still just having some questions about if we're meeting the need, if we still have that transportation shortage? And then the other concern I'm having was, I think on one of the slides, the indication was upwards of 70% of patients are accessing healthcare in the system by way of, it was telephonic and, and digital access. And so I'm just, I guess I'm still just worried about what about those folks who don't have transportation and/or access to digital devices and/or broadband?
Yeah, so I'll take that one, Councilmember. So Jason Fornia, Community Care, so our Hancock testing site is at Interstate 35 and 41st, that was the first we opened, but for the very concerns you raise, it was the reason why Community Care, based on not only knowledge, discrete knowledge within the community at large relative to transportation concerns, but also hearing from community members that we needed to bring testing closer to the, and more proximal to where they live, is one of the reasons why we initiated our Eastern Travis County Testing Initiative. And so on Mondays and Fridays, we have testing at the Jordan Elementary School in, in partnership with AISD in Colony Park, we're in Dell Valley at the Southeast Metropolitan Park on Thursday mornings, we're at Maynor High School, Senior High School on Wednesdays, and we're also in the Austin Colony Hornsby Bend area at the Dunlop, Middle, Hornsby Dunlop Middle School, or Elementary School, I should say, on Tuesdays. Additional to that, down at our William Cannon site, which is down in Dove Springs, our Flugerville site, our Runberg site, we're doing onsite testing. So Flugerville and William Cannon, folks, when they come to those health centers, are able to get tested as they're entering the building, and in some cases, we actually have testing outside, and William Cannon, which is in Dove Springs and Flugerville, are prime examples of that. So it doesn't mitigate the issue completely, but, but having access to other testing sites, I think, has helped, and we saw, and are close to almost 600 unique individuals tested throughout the Eastern Travis County through those initiatives at those sites, and more to come on that. As we've opened up testing within our health centers, it's across the board, all of our health centers are up and running with a few exceptions. We have a couple of our smaller OB-GYN clinics, the Austin OB-GYN clinics, the one in Springdale and Riverside, still remain closed, partly because we've concentrated OB facilities on our Southeast Health and Wellness, or North Central and East Austin Health Centers to protect the, the health and wellbeing of our prenatal patients. We are supporting and assisting with transportation as well, not just for testing, but for clinic access as well. So while a lot of our clinic services are still being provided via telephone or telemedically, we are providing services onsite, just so that there's clarity. You don't need to have access to a computer, you don't need to have access to a smartphone. Actually, the vast majority of what we're doing is actually just, as long as they've got access to a landline or to a, a, a phone, be it a cell phone without digital or smartphone capabilities, we're able to communicate effectively with our patients, and if need be, if they need to be seen in person, then we're able to do that at one of our clinics. Additional to that, we've set up arrangements for mail home pharmacy deliver, delivery coming out of our central pharmacy at a Southeast Health and Wellness. So we've tried to take a comprehensive approach, by no means does that mean we're getting to everyone's needs, and so as we continue to learn throughout this pandemic, we're tweaking our resources and how we approach to make sure folks are able to access it. The concern about folks being able to connect to us telephonically has been raised, so we're working with our partners at Central Health to figure out how best do we go ahead and mitigate that, and so, you know, that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Poole.
Thanks, I'm going to look at the slides that Dr. Esq provided, and I know he isn't here, maybe Director Hayden could answer. If you could look at slide 15, that new cluster, I think it's Q, the new cluster, those numbers look pretty significant, there's two deaths out of 26 residents, 18 workers. Can you tell us if they're following infection control protocols? And if they were, why was there this big outbreak? Is there something happening that we don't know about, or they're not doing enough, or were they not complying? Can you give us, tell us the story that's happening there, please? And if anybody can answer, if Stephanie isn't able to answer that, somebody else. So it's Esq, slide 15.
So, so ultimately, at those, at those sites, we are, as you know, we are increasing our ability to test the employees and the residents. So as those tests come back positive, then you are going to see, really across the board for the long-term care facilities, you are going to see additional, we are going to see a, an increase in positive rate for the staff as well as the, the residents.
If that's the case, then it probably would be useful for us to get a little bit of additional information on these charts so that we can, obviously, if more people are being tested, our numbers are going to go up, and, and that, that may or may not be related to a surge because we have reopened. But we need to be able to sift through that, those different variables, so if staff could give us additional information on these documents, and also, could we get these presentations before our meeting to walk through some pretty dense material, listen and read, and we haven't had a chance to look through these pages ourselves in advance? Is there a possibility, Mayor, City Manager, that we can get this information in the same timeframe that we get our other official documents for meetings? Please, it'd be, it'd be really helpful, I think it might limit how many questions we have in this forum.
Understood, we'll, we'll do our best, thank you.
Mayor, in the, in the special called, is there?
Mayor, in the, in the special call, is there an opportunity for us to also address these, these questions as well, ask questions to these experts as well?
Uh, I'll check and see about getting all the experts back. Again, this is kind of a hurtfully attached pull everybody to a council meeting like this because everybody is literally running 90 miles an hour, actually doing the work. But I'm sure that in the special call next week when we talk about the budget, we also have an opportunity to talk about these issues and at least have some of these. But we'll check and see.
And get, and get the documents in advance, please. I think it will make our meetings go faster, I hope, I think. Thanks.
And I agree with that too. It's been, that's, that has been the request all the time. And I know staff is trying to get us documents ahead of time because they understand the importance of us being able to review things so that they get better questions when, when we're together, rather than having a need to then bring them back again to be able to ask the questions that they weren't able to ask first. But everybody, again, is going 90 miles an hour, actually doing the work too. But, but I agree with you and I know that staff hears that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Alter.
Good morning and thank you for the presentations. As we try to, um, puzzle our next steps to address the high prevalence of the cases and hospitalizations, um, in certain populations, um, we've talked about the need to improve access to information and languages and get that information out. We've talked about access to testing. And in item 38, we're going to talk a little bit about the ability to stay home and making that easier. There seems to be another piece here that I'd like to hear more about, which is if people don't have the luxury of staying home, how do we make their work sites safer? And what is the role of the city in kind of doing that? So I'd like to hear from our staff on what we're doing to make those sites safer, whether it's hand washing stations, it's access to P P E, other things like that. And then if we have data from where we're seeing, um, you know, the positive, you know, what do, what do we know about whether these are folks who have been able to stay home or not stay home or, um, you know, in that regard? I just think we have to, we also have to, we also have to think about the ability to stay home. And if we can't make it so everyone can stay home, we've been precluded from taking certain actions from the state and, and, and we have to address the economic side. What are the things that we can do to make sure that if someone has to go to work and they don't have symptoms, that they have the safest, um, place to work possible?
My concern then, uh, Director Hayden and, and folks from Community Care can also join. But, you know, this is a, a discussion that our entire country, the entire world is having, and we need to really amp up the way in which we educate and communicate around the importance of exactly as you're saying, uh, both the hygiene and social distancing and to create, uh, situations where those businesses are incentivized to do that. So it is that social contract that we have with our community members around knowing that they will only visit places that adhere to those policies. But we stand ready to make sure that those businesses have the resources that they need, that they're putting up signs, that they're accessing, uh, P P E and, and sanitation equipment. And we filter those requests, uh, as we would normally through our E O C. And so even if there are specific areas that need more assistance with, with, uh, different sanitation or, or, or hygiene or, 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 or materials that they be requesting, uh, we, we need to, we need to make sure that we're trying to be responsive in that respect. But I'll ask Director Hayden if she wants to add anything else around how we're continuing to provide that outreach and education to our business community.
Um, I appreciate that and I don't want to hear from Dr. Hayden, but I also just want to add, I do want to understand if we have any data about the ability to stay home or not.
I'm not aware of anything comprehensive for the region, uh, but if others on the line have that data, uh, feel free to try and.
It's a question that's been asked of the E O C, Councilmember Alter, and no one's been able to move forward with that yet. All the information we have at this point is, uh, uh, just based on, on conversations, like at the construction site, uh, some of the workers groups have gone out, talked to the workers, have given us anecdotal information back. Some of that's representative, I think there were four of our colleagues bringing a, a resolution this week that speaks to that issue. But I haven't seen, um, any real data drawing on that, surveys or the like, just the anecdotal information and suggestions of what barriers might be. And there are many.
Does Director Hayden have anything to add?
I, I agree with, um, City Manager Crunk and the Mayor as well. Um, and, and the businesses, uh, business owners, um, have been reaching out to either 311 or, um, directly to Austin Public Health via emails as they are, um, transitioning back to the workforce. And we've been providing some technical assistance to them, um, and, and helping them to, um, develop various protocols. And the ones that, um, may have requested some additional support, um, some of that is represented in the information that, um, Mr. Vanino will, um, will review during his presentation. So for example, we know that the, um, childcare, uh, facilities have requested some additional help as they are, um, starting to set up and get an, an increase in the number of, of children that they're going to be providing services to. So we are continuing to work in that space and, 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 and provide that technical assistance.
I want to just, you know, I, I, I think that there may be, you know, more of a need than just technical assistance. I don't think it's that easy for folks to get their hands on the masks and, and, and I just, I don't know if there's a role for us, um, in, in more formally providing some of the resources or creating the access mechanisms, um, to make it as simple as possible for folks. You know, folks know that they need sanitation, they know they need masks, but they don't know where to get those, um, in a timely way that they can afford, um, across the board. Thank you.
And to that end, on something I know that, uh, Councilmember Alter, that you have also been working on, there's, uh, a nonprofit, uh, yesterday that just gave 100,000 masks to construction sites. Uh, and it's that group whose name I cannot remember at the moment.
A T X Emergency Supply Foundation.
Uh-huh. That has invited any employer in the city to call up, uh, anyone in the city. They have apparently access to, to millions of masks, uh, and are asking people to call in and they're pointing out that they'll provide those masks, uh, for free if you're unable to pay, uh, asking people to pay for the next person to be able to use them if they're able to do that. But in case anybody's watching our meeting today and would like to have an immediate access to masks, um, that is presently and immediately, uh, available. But I agree with you, Councilmember Alter, I wish more people knew about that site. Right now he's asking for people to promote it more on social media. So if you're listening to this to get that word out as widely as we can, we actually have someone with supply of masks looking to get them out to employers or to workers or to ever in, um, in scale quantities.
At A T X Emergency Supply Foundation, um, it can be looked up that way, um, for folks who, who, but I, I just think that there is these bottlenecks, like even if you want to set it up very safely, we still have a weak supply chain and we have a role, um, you know, for that.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, someone else have a question? Councilmember Kassar?
My, uh, question was for Dr. Esq. and if Director Hayden, this is better for him, then I think just an email from him to us would work. But I just want to know if there's anything else that our experts believe should be getting done in the jail? That I think his slide showed a lot of the work that's getting done and a lot of folks I don't think know all, everything that's being done. But if there's anything else that should be getting done, it would be really useful for us to know. And in particular, I know that there's a real scarcity of testing. And so, so I would, I'm interested in when or if it makes sense for us to, um, more vigilantly be testing asymptomatic people in the jail. I think it's, it's really that we're not in a position that other cities and jails have gotten into and we don't want to get into that position. So, uh, Director Hayden, if that's better for Dr. Esq. to just email in and say answer to you, that's okay. But I, that was my, most of the other questions have been asked by my colleagues.
Any other questions, colleagues? All right, then let me conclude with this first, uh, to, uh, Director Hayden and to, uh, Dr. Esq. and, and the Austin Public Health team, Travis County. We, we obviously have a, a real challenge with respect to percentages that are too high in our communities of color that are most susceptible. But I also want to just recognize that it's a too high percentage of a, of a small number. Uh, and we have you guys to thank to a large degree for the fact that we're not dealing with the large numbers, uh, that so many communities are, are, are dealing with. So thank you for, for leading, helping to leave our community in a position where you're able to help tamp it down so much. Special thanks to Community Care and to Central Health. You are at the front lines in the area that is most challenging in our community right now. We want to make sure that the city is doing everything it can to support your, your operations. And I want to pick back up this afternoon, the issue raised by the Mayor Pro Tem and this again by Councilmember Tovo. Let's, let's talk about the best place to make sure that, that all the voices in this community that want to help have an ability and a way to be able to, 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 to plug in. So thank you for everything that you're doing. Manager, thank you for, for your leadership on this as well. All right, let's now go to, um, the, the next presentation. It is 11:10. Uh, Matt, do you want to bring up finance side of this?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Tovo.
Can I make a quick suggestion to ponder? I, I think I really appreciate having these presentations. They're super informative and very useful. We seem to always run out of time for questions and I would just, um, ask that, that one solution might be to have them in segments and maybe have people come at different times. So we have, we have an opportunity to ask questions after each segment. But it, it seems to me that several of the people who are presenting today, and this has happened in the past, Dr. Esq. and others, are also on, on route to Travis County to present probably a lot of the same information. And so we have a unique opportunity, I, I think. I have no idea, um, C T M, how complicated this would be. But, but since, see, since Travis County Commissioners Court are, are receiving some of the same information, are interested in some of the same things, this might be a unique opportunity in this environment for us to have that piece, those pieces of our meetings be joint so that at the same time, we're listening to Dr. Esq. and asking questions, the Commissioners Court are in the same virtual environment so that we can really be most efficient with our, our staff's time, but also, um, potentially have more time for questions.
I think it's a really good idea to explore. So I'll think about that. Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.